Good. When we were in our pre-council worship, earlier, we just had a motion to, what's the word?
Recede.
Thank you. To recess. So, we're reconvening now. On our agenda, we're at 1:02. It is 5:07 PM, April 23rd, 2019. We are gathered for an update. Hey, y'all, we're about, we're getting started now. So, this is an update from Landmark Design to the City Planning Commission and City Council regarding the future land use planning process and overnight accommodations moratorium. I thought it was good to note that, first of all, everyone thanks for coming together for this joint meeting. Also, soon, we will be joined by the County Planning Commission. They intend to come over and just sit with us. And so, I don't know if we want to designate a place for them to sit, just in those front two rows. Maybe Rachel can be the row watcher for us. Yes, yes. Protect them. So, so that we can, so that they can listen to our conversation as well. So, thanks to everyone for being here for this joint meeting, and let's get started.
Would you mind if we started off with maybe an introduction of Nora and a quick conversation with her?
That would be so great. Where is she? There she is. There she is. Our new planning director.
Yeah.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Everybody? Wow, it's great to see so many women. Really? It's, I'm not used to that.
We're stacked. It's awesome.
I'm in too, of course.
It's not intentional. It's just...
Yesterday was my first day, and I'm really happy to be here for a while. I'll just be a sponge, trying to figure out what's going on and who everybody is and stuff. I've met with the mayor a few times and talked to David, you know, on and off over the past few weeks. And I'm really excited to be here. I think Moab is facing some really interesting challenges that will be fun. You know, I'm kind of sick and wrong that way. But I really do enjoy challenges like that in the public process. And, and what I'd like to do within the next few weeks is try to sit down with each one of you and just kind of chat and get to know you a little bit and find out what your hot buttons are and what things you'd like to get done and what things you cherish about Moab. So, my husband and I are moving down here. We purchased a condo, so it's a commitment. And we're moving down for the time in a couple of weeks. So, we're kind of in temporary quarters right now. But we're really excited. He's retired, so...
You know Creek Peblo, was that where it is?
Yeah, Creek Peblos, yeah. Yeah, it's, I'm excited about being close into town in Moab. So, I was, most recently, was with Saratoga Springs in Utah County, which was an experience. I mean, my projects alone were about 6,000 units. And multifamily, single-family, everything, you name it, it's just booming. I mean, like crazy. So, that was interesting. Before that, I was planning director for Salt Lake City, and that was really great. Politics got to me after a while, as often happens in Salt Lake City.
David kind of has this wry smile on his face. I wonder...
Yeah.
There's some politics up there.
There definitely is politics up there. But I enjoyed my time there, and I learned a lot. And Salt Lake City's actually doing some really cool stuff. So, they're quite progressive in a lot of ways, and so I really learned a lot. Before that, I was in New Jersey for seven and a half years, which is where my husband is from. And I, after my kids were out of the house, I moved out to New Jersey. We got married, second marriage. And so I spent seven and a half years there, which was also very interesting and enlightening, since I've been a Westerner my whole life. Before that, I spent 25 years up in Park City, Summit County, worked for the city and the county, and worked for Ralph Becker at Bear West for a while. So, I have a pretty broad experience. And raised two kids in the Park City area, and they're both live in Salt Lake. So, this is great. They're happy that I'm here, too. A place to stay with mom. So, there you go.
Well, welcome to Moab, Nora. Thank you so much for joining us on this adventure.
Yes, it is.
And certainly, the adventure begins with the future land use map.
Yes, it does.
No, no rest for the weary.
That's right.
So, yeah, well, it's, thank you. Thank you for that, David.
You can call me whatever. I'm, you know, available right now. You know what it'll be like in two weeks.
It's true. And what's your email address, Nora?
It's N. Shepard, S. H. E. P. A. R. D. at moabcity.org.
Thanks, Nora.
Great.
So, before maybe jumping into the formal presentations for when the County Planning Commission gets here, just so we don't inadvertently leave them, you know, so they don't miss that, too. Maybe it would be a good time for, you know, you all to just talk with Jenny and get a, I know a lot of you have been concerned about where we're at in the process and where the City Council and the Planning Commission fit into that process, and maybe now's the time to at least talk a little bit about that.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Before we get started, can you tell me what the end date is to our six months?
Oh.
Approximately August 11th.
August 11th? Thank you. Okay.
Come on up.
Do you want to go and do it?
Well, I have a schedule, so it might, I was going to talk about that.
Thanks for taking time to talk informally before the Planning Commission for the county comes over. That's great. I know that, Allison, you've got, you know, some questions, too, so...
Did you want to jump to it, or?
Just the first one.
Beyond timeline, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which you could probably, oh, okay. All right.
So, this is just our, our schedule. And I, I think I put it at the front just because we've heard concerns that people are a little in the dark, and just wanted to explain what we've been doing. And that's doing a lot of homework. And, and it was all part of our task to review, get all this review stuff done and research and analysis and mapping upfront. And then also, talk to the public. We had the two public scoping meetings at the end of March. And although it's, I know they sounded like gripe sessions to you, they were really important to us. It's the way that we get to know what's going on in the community. And it's also the way that we kind of build a rapport with the community that we're planning in. They get to know that we are listening to them, and, and we continue to do that throughout the whole process. So, they know that when they come, we're still listening, and, and that they're an important part of, of the plan. So, right now, we're in this Task Three, which is the alternatives development. We're, we have the public workshop scheduled for Tuesday, April 30th. And at that, and I, I don't want to go too much into it, because that's kind of the meat of what we're going to talk, what I'm going to review today. But at that, we will review options. And we have a spectrum of options to give people things to respond to. And, and, and once again, it's kind of, well, we're reaching out to the public to get information and, and response. And following that, we have, we'll be working with the Advisory Committee, which we've, we've already met with once, and this will be our second meeting, and getting their input on those options as well. So, once we get all of that data gathered and information and public part done, that's when we will really dive into, like, creating the actual ordinance and where your input will become more and more a, a part of it. But that, that upfront part is really important, the research part, and the reaching out to the public and getting that buy-in from the public. So, that's just kind of a little bit. I should mention, we also did focus groups, too. There were, you know, some, after the public scoping meetings, we kind of felt like there was maybe an overwhelming consensus. And so, we reached out to different groups that maybe didn't come to those, business owners, developers, high school students, and got some, some interesting feedback that way as well. So, that's what we've been up to. And certainly didn't mean to leave anyone in the dark. So, also, I, I believe Mark Vlasic reached out to the council members. Got, I think he spoke to everyone except Tawny by phone.
And me.
And you. And that's why I met with you today. So, yeah, so that's kind of a, do we have any questions, just generally? I do have a, you know, more in-depth presentation to go in.
Allison?
I think I'd like to see the presentation first.
Okay.
Maybe that will settle, but I have in my head. I am a little bit disappointed that the...
Okay, here, Mike, hold on.
Sorry. I am a little disappointed that the one, they, where some of us have to work, we can't be a part of it.
The what, meetings? Or Advisory Committee meetings?
Yeah. It's, it's the last one worked, but they're definitely not ideal to have that time with those of us that have jobs.
Does that, so the 8:31 is not anymore to help?
I can't go, for example. Allison teaches, I work at 9:00, and I think others are in that same position, so... Am I on?
I, that's why I was just looking for Summer, and I don't, it doesn't sound like your mic is on.
I tried to fix it, but I don't know.
Green. Well, Green, you turn it off. Pushing turns it off. But here comes Summer. We'll fi, we'll figure it out.
Well, I think why we, I mean, we, just from our perspective, we try to make it economical when we travel here. And if we have two night meetings, that means we have to stay over twice. And that, and that's why we do it that way. But we can certainly look into other and see if it could work within the budget.
That better? Yeah.
I, I know that when Mark, maybe a week ago now, we originally had a couple of future land use plan meetings planned perhaps a week ago. And then Mark, and then those never happened. And Mark explained to me that he tried to reach people and couldn't, basically. And that's when he decided to just kind of call people and let their people stay. I don't know if that had anything to do with you guys or not.
It seems like a lot of people were headed out of town.
Yeah, last week was our, our spring break for our school, so that was a very difficult week, so...
I'm sure you'll touch on this when you get to April 30th, but if people are still thinking, oh, I have comments and I haven't submitted them yet, can they just continue to email you guys?
Yep. I'm, I mean, I received one, I think, yesterday. So, or this weekend, I think. So, it's, it's definitely ongoing. We like to have it that way. At a certain point, we do have to cut things off, especially in this project, because of the, the quick timeline. So, after the April 30th meeting, we're hoping to, like, we'll probably just announce during that meeting that we need people to, to give us their comments within a week, so that we can move into getting the, the ordinances drafted. But yeah, this is actually a really great community to work in. It's highly engaged, and, and we've gotten a lot of emails, which is, which is good. I know it's probably overwhelming to you sometimes, but like, it's better, in my opinion, to have an engaged community. So, people that care.
Others with comments or questions?
When is County Planning Commission showing up?
Until 5:30.
Okay.
I think a lot of it hinges on the presentation. Just curious. The alternative is that we just get right in. Is it a presentation that they would receive otherwise in another setting before the public house, oh, pu, public how, open?
No, this is really just to, to get, and give an update of where we are, what we've been doing, and where we're headed.
Let's go ahead and start. They can always watch on Facebook to see the first part of whatever they miss. My concern is that they're going to roll until 5:30 and then walk over, so it may not be efficient to wait for them. Let's just go ahead and get started. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see if, let's go back and just see if there's anything else I needed to cover. I don't think so. We, we did talk about, like, if we need another meeting once we've gone into the, the drafting of the policies and ordinances, if it seems like another public meeting is needed, that we're willing to do that. And then, really, we're just kind of hitting the, that kind of key point between, you know, the end of April and May, where, where we're just going into the real meat of it. And, and so, it's just, I'm right in. Okay. Then we have those two months to do the codification and adoption, so, okay. So, the, the public workshop, we have four main things that we're, we're looking at doing there. And that's to review the ordinances and zoning options. We had a lot of people ask about, like, well, what, what are the options, you know, what to do. There's review, a review of local and national case studies. And then, we have our economic consultants that are, are working on doing an economic and market analysis, and they'll present their work. I haven't seen it yet, so...
Oh, so I thought this public workshop was going to be a reflection of what was presented tonight. No? Oh, I just thought that what was going to be shown to the public at this public workshop was going to be similar to what we were receiving tonight.
Yeah. We're, I'm going to give you an overview.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, we will, I don't have that component today. That's...
Oh, okay. That's good to know. I won't, I'm not able to attend that meeting.
Okay.
And I, I emailed. I don't know if others are able to attend.
It will also be re-presented at the Advisory Committee meeting.
Okay. And when is that one?
The next day.
Oh, okay.
I can't make it either, Emily. But my understanding is, I know it's at the Grand Center, which I don't know if they can broadcast a live feed, but it was my understanding that it probably can't be recorded. So, it's better than nothing. Yeah.
Okay.
That it can be recorded?
That was my impression. Yeah. I could be wrong.
And then, just to, to get, we're going to present those options that I mentioned, the preliminary land use concepts that are focused on overnight accommodations. So, those are the, those are the four areas of focus of the meeting. Yeah, so, I'm not going to go into these in, in detail, but what we have been doing is doing this review of ordinances and zoning options. These are kind of the main ones. We als, also looked at some other tools. And I have just a packet for all of you, so you can read it your own leisure, if you, if you want to look at what we've been looking at. So, maybe it makes sense to, well, okay. But we've been trying to explore lots of different options, get a sense of things that, that would work for, for Moab. And, and a lot of these are ones that are used, and were already presented as part of some earlier, the zoning toolbox that was presented at our first Advisory Committee meeting. But then, we've also built upon that as we've moved through the process. So, we've been working on that. And then, just this review of local and national examples. We took six Utah examples. Those are pretty important because, same laws? Because they, we know that they work in Utah. And so, that was kind of a, an area of focus. And then we, but we did also look at five regional and national examples for, for various reasons. There's a, a second handout that reviews all of those in further detail. So, you can look at, like, kind of what, what we, if you look at the handout, it kind of explains what we were specifically looking at in that community, and then gives a brief overview of the area and how they use the tool, and then how it may or may not apply to Moab.
So, when you say they work in Utah, does that mean legally?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, with that said, we have developed four land use concepts, and we're calling them options. And it's kind of a spectrum, one being the status quo, to give, and that really, we included that to give kind of a, a baseline. And with each of these, we'll have a map. We're still developing, doing the production work, but we'll have a, a map to illustrate each of these options. And the first one, I think, will be kind of really interesting to see what would happen if you just did nothing. And then, how, how compare if you did these, or selected one of these other options. So, we have, you know, the, the do-nothing status quo on one end, and then kind of the extreme and strict regulation on the other end, and then two variations in between.
Are these still being amended before the public workshop next week?
We, at least at this chart, or for example, because extreme strict regulation seems a bit leading when you're presenting that to the public. If you're saying this is an extreme option, I just feel like the feedback you're going to get on that is, is almost predetermined. Just that phrasing caught me immediately as something that...
Okay. Well, maybe you could recommend an, an alternative once we...
I don't know. Is that off-base by other people?
No, I think that's very appropriate. That's a very appropriate comment.
Okay.
I mean, if it didn't take into account the current state of where there are overnight accommodations, which is everywhere, I think maybe it would be extreme. But I think when you're looking at Moab, where there's already X amount, and there's already X amount in the pipeline that haven't been built yet, that are going to happen regardless of the moratorium, or if we continue to permit new ones, it just seems a little skewed. And I understand why that was your initial title for that category. But I just feel like presenting it to the public, we have a lot of folks who maybe are going to get the, sort of the, the surface level of this, and they'll see that, and that, I think it'll color things unnecessarily.
I guess maybe you can explain to me what, what, that, what the reaction would be to, to that? I guess I'm not quite sure I'm following.
I just think it's, it's, if, if council, City Council, County Council, Planning Commissions were to come even close to choosing what you, the design folks are calling extreme regulation, we would get hammered about that.
Gotcha.
Regardless if it's the best thing for town, and regardless if we're still going to have 500, 600 new overnight rooms that are going to be built regardless of that. So, I just want to see...
Just the wording.
Yeah, just the wording.
Okay.
It could even be, really, if you were asking for another definition. So, there's allow growth with focused growth or controlled growth could be...
Yeah, something like that.
Right.
I think the idea is that people don't like to be regulated, but they would like to...
Yes.
Things to be... Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll just sneak it in. Okay, so you have this in front of you. I recognize there's lots of text on it.
Oh, maybe that's what I was saying, though. It's not the word regulation, but controlled growth.
Yeah.
Instead of focused growth, controlled growth.
Yeah.
Hi, Brian, coming up.
Thanks. Sorry to interrupt you.
How are you?
Good, thanks.
Okay, so as I mentioned, the status quo is included to, well, let, let me take a step back. So, after we did our review, I think that, that, the, because the moratorium's pretty quick, we need, we need something that's implementable, like, quickly. So, it's kind of become apparent that, that we'll probably have to use some, some basic tools and then bring in some maybe more complicated ones after the moratorium to, to, to take care of some of the things that, that some of the goals that have come out of this. And so, so, most of these are really focusing on using overlay zones, and that's primarily for, for that reason, that it will be probably the easiest way that you can get control of things quickly. And then, they'll be using some other tools as, as you go along. So, okay, so like I said, status quo, we want to use it as a baseline if things continue as they are. And so, I've just kind of put, like, we have the, these use by rights in all of the commercial zones, both in the county and in the city. And I've listed them out. When I drew them out on the map yesterday, it was pretty depressing. So, the regulatory tool is the traditional Euclidean zoning, where you have rights that are used, permitted or conditional or prohibited. Okay, so the second one is, the focus of it is to allow growth with increased performance requirements. So, the intent is to match the type and scale of the overnight accommodations to the different existing parts of the community. And we've basically divided up the, the community into four areas. We have the downtown area. And we're, we're really, I'll go to some of the pros and cons of the, of each of these. But we're really, that's one of the area that's probably going to be hard, is to nail down what the downtown area should be. But in this scenario, the overnight accommodations would be limited to condos, townhomes, and bed and breakfasts. And the scale would, would be designated by the overnight accommodation overlay. And I just want to note that this overnight accommodation overlay zone will have requirements in, in all of these scenarios. And it, and it will require onsite mixed-use development and employee housing, or contributions to a development of the same in a designated mixed-use project area. So, those are just, we, it's just something we've heard loud and clear. So, they, it happens in all of the scenarios. And then, also, some kind of performance standards for water, noise, energy, transportation, all of these issues that have come as part of the tourism and inundation, inundation of overnight accommodations. So, north of downtown to the Colorado River is where new hotels, motels, and campgrounds and RV parks would be allowed. Once again, with all those, by overlay zone and with all those requirements. South of downtown, downtown, you wouldn't have any hotels, motels, or campgrounds. But condos and townhomes that are used by, used as overnight accommodations and bed and breakfasts are allowed. The intent is to try to focus the tourism, heavy tourism to the north, and then make the south more residence-friendly. So, with that, to try to encourage other commercial types, there will be a, an evaluation or some kind of criteria system that's structured for the promotion of community development. So, it focuses on the local community. And then, north of the Colorado River, this option would allow campgrounds and RV parks in that area up into, up to the edge of arches. With, once again, those kind of, it's an overlay zone, so it has restrictions and requirements. So, for this one, the regulatory tools that are used are the overlay zones, and then you would most likely have to, because and then you would most likely have to, because you're focusing on the type and scale, and trying to blend it in with those areas, that you would work on having some kind of form-based codes. And as I mentioned, there's this mandatory mixed-use development and some performance standards to help with those, you know, conserving water and, and energy, and things like that. Okay. So the, the third one is focused growth, determined by area. And really, the difference between two and three is that in three, we just don't allow any new overnight accommodations in the downtown area. And it's similar to, to, as far as like, the north of downtown goes, and, and south of downtown. And then north of the Colorado River, there's, there are no overnight accommodations allowed. So with, this one has a little bit less of a focus on the form, and, and more of just focusing on putting growth in certain areas, and not putting growth in other areas. And then the fourth one, which I guess is controlled growth.
Can I ask, just real quick, since Ronnie, you were on the Umtah site, are, in that plan, are overnight accommodations?
Well, I mean, you guys probably know, I mean, this, this area of developable land is pretty small once you get north of the Colorado River, because you're not far from Arches, and a big part of that belongs to the Department of Energy. So you're asking specifically for the community vision, long-term vision, for what'll happen on the site. There's no lodging whatsoever on the site, because we don't know, we don't know enough long-term about that. So no one was comfortable putting that use...
Radioactivity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, not so much that, but, well, yes, okay, yes and no. I don't want people to think it's, yeah.
Jenny, could you clarify, when you talk about north of the Colorado River, does that include like up to 313, you know? Because there is private land north of the river, still in Grand County, beyond the sort of immediate adjacency to the river?
It's to the national park.
The park entrance?
Okay.
Okay.
So that's a very short distance, okay.
Yeah.
So Umtah.
Umtah, and, and there are existing hotels right now.
All right, so number four is, is, the intent is to severely limit overnight accommodation throughout the area, and to focus new growth towards other commercial and residential and community services. So all new overnight uses will be eliminated as permitted uses. Overnight accommodations would be allowed as conditional uses with, within small designated overnight accommodation overlay zones. So to restrict growth or control it, we would be doing that by just making really small zones where that could happen. And then also with the addition of discouraging it, overnight accommodation growth through the use of impact fees, and then also promoting growth in those community-centric, identified community nodes through the use of impact fees, having less impact fees.
So one question for you about impact fees. Chuck in the audience has been so good about telling us, impact fees are typically assessed for straightforward services, such as sewers and water, and the infrastructure required to build those, and they're targeted against the bond, so that people who are gonna use the new infrastructure will end up paying the cost of that infrastructure. And I'm familiar with all that, but, so my question is, when you use the term "impact fees" here in conjunction with discouraging overnight accommodations growth, and promote growth in community-centered, identified community nodes, exactly what do you mean when you say "impact fees"?
Not on that one yet? You're not on that one yet, right?
Yeah, we're on that one.
The bottom of the second green blob down on the...
Uh, that's something that will, you know, I, I honestly don't have that an answer for you tonight. But, but you're right, there are certain things that impact fees legally. So we'll have to explore that with our economic consultants.
Just as a side note, we spent years and years trying to get conditional uses out of our code, and so I hope there will be a better way for us, if we go this direction, for us to do that.
Right, so, you know, maybe I should alter the text on that, because it really will be taken, taken care of by the, that overlay zone. I just probably need to take that wording out.
Thank you.
I don't think it's conditional use as the way that we're afraid of seeing.
If you covered this before I got here, I apologize. When you're talking about downtown in all of these scenarios, how far east and how far west are you talking about?
That's what we're debating back in our office right now. So what we're gonna do is, like, and I actually, I think I didn't include, I didn't include a big pros and cons, but that, that's one of the, we kind of listed the pros and cons. There's a printout, but I didn't include it up here.
So that's the second page you described?
Yeah, and that's probably one of our, you know, like, that's probably one of the harder things to, to decide, because it's, um, it's pretty debatable, you know, what, what should be determined as downtown. But what we'll do is, we'll, we'll draw something on the map, and we'll get people's response to it. And, and that usually will, we find out what, what we did wrong.
Do you wanna, do you wanna pose that as a question to this group?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be happy, like, we can draw more accurate stab on the map before we go to the public.
The way that I described, I, I can just speak for myself, when, when we were meeting this morning and you asked me that question, I described my idea of like downtown as being like an egg, with the yellow part, the yolk, and then the white part, kind of being like, if that was downtown, that the yolk is like center, and 191, two blocks north, a block south, and then a block east and west from that area is sort of the core yoky part. And then C3 in general is kind of the more egg white.
Yeah, I think we also need to discuss among ourselves what the characteristics are that we imagine in those zones. So the yolk, do we want this to be high-density, walkable, vibrant at night? Or are we imagining it more of just a daytime, go-in-and-out-and-buy-a-t-shirt kind of a place? And then the C3, is this somewhere for employee housing? Or is it transitional housing? Or is it a walkable, bikeable community that can access all of our amenities? So we need to characterize the zones that we're trying to look at.
Yeah. I think it ends up being more of a north-south question than an east-west question. I don't think you'd probably get a ton of argument about, when you're talking about downtown, it going rim to rim, east to west. I, I don't think if you're limiting overnight accommodations, you know, three blocks within Main Street, that you shouldn't also be doing that to the wetlands on one side, and to sand flats on the other. So, I mean, if, if anybody disagrees with that, just, it does seem, just the way that the valley is, it, it would be very strange, I think, to have, you know, it's kind of all of town is downtown at a certain point, so, yeah.
It isn't very big.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I guess at, at a certain point, does downtown kind of, where does downtown fall apart? You know, or, and, and is it the river? Is it, or creek, I should say, or is it, you know, where, where the C3 zone ends?
I mean, the, the numbered streets, north to south, are probably a good north-south metric when you're talking about that, where it stops being 500 and starts being streets with names, might be a general area.
So Becky, I got a question, not Becky, I'm sorry, Jenny, I got a question for you. So you use the term overlay zones here a lot. Could you clarify for me exactly how they would get specified? In other words, at the conclusion, the moratorium will, will do one of these, presumably do one of these four options, or something like that, which will typically involve a overlay, one or more overlay zones. But are the overlay zones specified by the time the moratorium closes, and whatever? So we have...
Yeah, that's the, that will be the part that kind of like, will be worked out, is the overlay zone. And, and then, like I said, you'll, these other things that take a little more time, like developing form-based codes, or, you know, these performance requirements will come later. But that overlay, the overlay zones are what will help you stop, you know, things from happening that you don't wanna happen. So it's gonna be that immediate solution.
Okay, so we would not, under the scenario you described, pass an ordinance, for example, with no overlay zones, and then return to the subject of, of creating overlay zones at a later time? We would not do that?
Yeah, I, I, that's my understanding, is that, that, that's what we would use to get what you want solved before the moratorium's over. Because you have some, you know, if you, if you, like, this, now's the time for you to say if you're not comfortable with using an overlay zone.
Can you offer an example of how an overlay would look in the fourth example? Just because there is no, in that one, there's no new overnight accommodation. So what is the overlay for? It's to focus your new commercial, other commercial, and services?
So the thought is that we need to provide a place for it to happen. So if the overlay zone would allow overnight accommodations in a certain area.
Okay, I guess it's confusing, because it says "all new uses shall be eliminated as permitted", so it makes it sound like there are no new ones, you're only grandfathering or whatever, old ones. So maybe I misunderstand what "for" is.
So...
Like automatically permitted, they wouldn't be used by rights anymore. You would have a certain overlay zone where you could consider new ones.
New ones.
Yeah.
Okay, I misread that.
Rather than having like, in our code now, C4, if you have this, then...
I worked the wording on this last one a little bit to make it work better. Probably get rid of conditional uses and just... I mean, I think that...
I think the use-by-right language is helpful, and to the public too, in presenting that, because saying something, you know, permitted, it would still be permitted. But I think just that understanding that you're not saying you can't have them, but just saying that you couldn't, if you meet the qualifications on a list at the planning department, automatically get it. And then like, planning commission, we don't have legislative authority, so we have to say yes if they meet those conditions, and then this would change that.
I would ask that this group works more closely with the economic group, because we need to know, we have a very predictable growth curve. And especially if we implement some of these zones, we can tell you exactly what the maximum capacity of each area will be, and we will know exactly how many people will go in each of those zones, because we're growing a lot, so they're all gonna fill up. So these examples need to coincide with the numbers. How many people are going to live in this new zone? How many tourists are going to come in, in the next year to 10 years?
Right. Yeah, and because this is a moratorium, and we're working really quickly, we just haven't been able to, to meet those two things yet. But that will happen. That's the whole point of having them do that work, so, is to find out what's, what's actually doable. And I'll be, I mean, in our preliminary talks with them, I mean, it's, it's not saying that, that overnight accommodation will be slowing down anytime soon. So as far as the, from the economic perspective, there's, there's a demand still, so. But that, that's all I know at this point, so.
So for two and three, you list as cons, "does not go far enough". Could you, what do you mean in terms of rebalancing our economy and...
Restricting, yeah, restricting growth. It could, it, we, we try to think of all the things that people might say, right, about, about it. And so if you compare it to four, it, it doesn't go far enough, is kind of the way.
So it's partly yours assessment, but also a projection of what you anticipate the reaction being?
Yeah, I mean, based on like, what we heard. I mean, we heard a lot of "stop all growth", you know? So, so we imagine that there will be, you know, that they'll be perceived as not going far enough.
Jenny, I wonder if you could share any feedback? You guys, I'm, I'm told, have touched, reached out to the business community, and people whose owners who would be impacted by whatever we may end up doing. And, you know, I at least expect, you know, a lot of resistance from it, but I am told that maybe it's not quite that bad. So can you give us, without naming any names, or, you know, get any general idea? There may not be any consensus, so far as I know, from the business community.
So we didn't, Zekaria did lead a bunch of them, but we, we did do a Zoom with that community, the business owners. And I'd say it was all over the place. There's a, there's a lot of different views, but all, but, but mostly the discussion was focused on what you would probably call a gripe session, and, and just like, this frustration with not being able to provide services that they want to, to the level that they want to. They can't get enough employees, they can't keep employees, it's hard to run their businesses in, in this environment, so.
I think it's worth it to note that there's this tension between overnight rentals slash hotels and all other business, simply because there's, when we think about like, office space, or retail space, from milk to like bedding and pillows, and kinda, all, you know, the full spoke, or full scope, when highest and best use is, and you can make so much money on overnight rentals, that's really where the tension is. But then there's also the tension that all the resources then get put into that arena, and then are not able to be spent on, on housing as well. So vendors get sucked into the, into the nightly rental world, where they would otherwise be installing, you know, sewer systems, or, you know, water, sewer, electricity, carpentry.
Yeah.
Contractors.
You know what I'm saying? And so it, it is interesting to dig a little deeper, like Mike, you were asking, what are the businesses saying, you know, what, from what sector are they speaking? I would assume that somebody speaking from the nightly rental sector would say, "I don't prefer this", but then maybe other sectors might have different feedback.
Or, "Thank you, and you were gonna make me a fortune, because we've restricted all overnight accommodation", which I've heard as well.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
From people that like, maybe have already developed the land that they own?
I think there's less of that that's public-facing.
Yep.
I think there's a lot of hesitation to come outright and say that, but I think that's there, for sure. I mean, economically, it makes sense, if you, if you own a hotel already, and you're, and you don't have plans to develop a new hotel, this sets you up well, so.
I think that there's this recognition that it is a super complex thing, and, and the, the concern, like I said, is that it's, that they're not able to keep up. And they just don't have the ability to keep up and provide the services that they want at the level they want to, and that impacts everyone. So that was, I think it, the, the conversation just kept on going that direction, even when it was pulled back, so.
One of the things, I mean, we know is like, we're behind 1,000 units. So where in this planned, at the end of the moratorium?
Of affordable housing, not lodging.
Of affordable, of affordable housing, affordable units. Where in this plan are we gonna put 1,000? You know, we have some, some numbers that we need to meet, you know, if we're doing this.
Right. And I, you know, I assume like, part, part of those numbers will be worked out when we get down into the details, because we do have to require, you know, a requirement is that they have to provide some, somewhere, and where does that go? You know, is it, is there a receiving zone for that, or is it onsite? And so those are the things that will be worked out in this next, you know, this... And so those are the things that will be worked out in this next, you know, the next stage.
Yeah, I think the staging of it, certainly with the time period that you're under, makes a heck of a lot of sense. Especially because you can't scale it back once it's already, the floodgates have been opened again. So, I mean, I think airing certainly in the immediacy on the side of, you know, because if everyone who owns property in town the day the moratorium lifts comes and puts in their paperwork, and then there's no land left for anything. So, I mean, it makes sense, and I certainly foresee this as a, a living, breathing thing that both the city and the county will be able to see how it works one year and where the holes are. And you can go one way, but not the other, so, yeah.
I think we have to be aware that anything, any restrictions that we put on ourselves will probably be taken advantage of in San Juan County.
Right.
We can't ignore that.
Right.
It's like the elephant in the corner, we can pretend it's not happening. But I think that anything we do, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot to some degree.
Yeah, that's one of the big cons. On the pros and cons list is like, you have no control over that.
We don't, but we can be wise about it.
Right.
Okay, and one of the first things we put in the pros and status quo was seen as fair to property owners who have undeveloped land. That should, that word fair should probably try to travel through as much of this as we can.
Meaning?
Well, it's, it's the status quo, leaving it as it is, trying to be fair
Right.
to the property owners, we have to bear that in mind.
Right.
Everywhere we go.
Well, and I guess that's why we have this spectrum is because we've heard so many people say that it doesn't even, doesn't matter, stop growth. So, so that's why we're presenting all of, all of these extreme, these two extremes.
That, that they're prioritizing the bigger picture of, of, you know, slowing down to the individual property owner's rights to develop.
Yeah.
I think any way that we can, you know, and this is, this is a little outside of the scope, but any way that this can be, I think the word fair can apply in different ways. I think the quality might, will likely increase with restrictions. It's not just saying, okay, you can and can't do this. It's saying, what is the, I think the overall quality, the competitiveness of existing overnight rentals is going to go up with any sort of limitations or restrictions. So I mean, maybe carrying that word fair forward in that way where it's saying, you know, it's not just everybody has a chance to do it, but I think the community has a chance to do it better than we're doing it now. Like, like Ashley, we're saying with
I agree.
services and not being able to find people or keep people or run your business, well, I think that will.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
But I, I think the fairness comes in in the sense that we're not restricting it, that they, we're not saying they can't do anything with their property.
Yeah.
We're just saying they can't make it into an overnight accommodation. So, so they have all these other options, and so in that way, it's still possible.
And at least one of the case studies, you mentioned that the community allowed overnight rentals, but time restricted it to say a month out of the year for each one. So that that wasn't the dominant use of the property, but it helped accommodate some of the peak demand. And I've wondered, and I mean, I see that here, like Easter week, a lot of people leave town and leave their houses empty. And that's money on the table that could potentially make housing more affordable and satisfy some of that demand without building new accommodations. And I'm wondering, does you perceive that as being a tool, and is that implicit in?
Wait, wait, so like, like a window where everyone can Airbnb?
Yes.
Or it rotates essentially. So they limit you like to maybe two weeks out of the year you can rent your house out. And I guess, I guess it's, so it's probably, it's Grand County that has tried that and felt, and said it was super hard to try to.
Enforcement seems like a nightmare.
And I'd like to comment, and other ski communities have, that have done that and have allowed month rentals. The people who work here in our community, work here year-round, a lot of them, when, especially in the height of the season, everybody needs to work. And so it's problematic when they, yeah, get kicked out for a couple of weeks. And I, I mean, I would hope that we, don't look at that as a, as a.
I think if you open that door just a little bit.
Well, it's, I think it's more from the perspective of, we've heard, we've heard quite a bit of people, because you've put these restrictions on, right, the residential areas, they can't, they can't do, rent their units out, right, out. But it's from that perspective that they like had planned on, on renting their house out for part of the year or things like that. And why can't it be changed and things like that? So that, this, that tool is kind of to, to help your residential population out that like, you know, wants to make some money off of their house while they're gone.
Well, they could rent it for 31 days now.
Yeah, they can rent it by the month instead of by the night.
I mean, if you have Car Show and Jeep Week are back-to-back, you could rent it out that whole month as long as people are technically renting it that whole month.
Oh, okay. So, but that's just kind of, that's, I, that's what I heard.
That's an interesting idea, but I don't know if the cons would outweigh.
But, but.
I have been, I have been told stories though of where people are like, yeah, I got to get out of my house for a week because it's going, it's getting rented. So that would be, that, that really is, thanks for bringing that up, Karen.
So is it not by choice?
So like, if you're renting a home, and then, oh, the week is open, and the landlord can make a thousand dollars.
A night.
A night, maybe, depending on.
They bump people out.
Then they would kick out their renter for a week to make money.
A lot of people don't have leases here is the problem too.
This is an old, much of leases.
In my mind, it kind of torpedoes, one of the reasons for doing all this in the first place. I mean, whatever we do, nothing changes overnight. Talking about long-term drifts, if you will, and our uses of mixed residential, mixed residential and commercial zones. And to do what we're talking about would be an incentive to keep them, you know, doing what they're doing now, which is not necessarily what one of my goals is anyway.
Becky, were you going to say something?
Yeah. So these towns that you used as examples to compare Mob to, did any of them have zoning in place to address where overnight accommodations could and couldn't be permitted? Or was it something new that they had to come up with to kind of control?
Meaning, you, what do you mean by new?
Like, did they have any zoning addressing where you could and couldn't do overnight accommodations?
I think, and this is where Mark would be the better person to ask, because he did all of this. But I think Springdale is, is one that they, they tell you where it can and it can't.
They previously had something in place. Because we have, before they implemented their changes.
I don't, I don't know that, because that requires a little more thinking.
Yeah.
With our city, our city and that, with the city and that, so, okay.
Because I feel like, especially in the downtown core, we have really good zoning, you know, as far as where you can and can't do things. There's really not much more that can be built within C2, C3, other than rebuilding a hotel or something. But, I don't know, just keep that into consideration. We do have pretty defined areas where you can and can't do.
So maybe leave that area alone?
Well, I think for the existing folks, like Williams Way, you know, there's small patches where it makes it hard when you remove that use. Or are you just doing an overlay, leaving the underlying use, and then it's only for new development? So you're leaving, okay.
Yeah, it would have no effect on existing or transfer of properties within existing use. So if you are on Williams Way and you own a condo and you're overnight renting it, you could sell it, and the overnight rental use would transfer with that as long as it was continued.
Not grandfathered.
Correct.
Okay, so I know people really don't like that.
Yeah.
The change of.
The grandfathered status.
I mean, is, are we looking, because Becky and I spoke before of looking at an overlay zone for where existing rentals exist, so people can flip back and forth, I mean, are we?
If they leave the underlying zone the way it is though, that leaves it the way it is. It's just new development, so maybe like Fifth West, C2, you're defining a new way of developing it or remove restricting, I guess.
And, and those zones don't necessarily have to cover the whole, you know, it can just be for a certain area.
I guess my point is, I just, I think we have good defined zoning, you know, where you can and can't do this already. A matter of enforcement is definitely an issue and has been where overnight accommodations are going into residential zones where they're not permitted.
You could almost.
I see bigger picture, like developing the whole corridor, you know, down south into hotels. I mean, that definitely could be a problem, or north. But I think downtown, I mean, I think the zoning's great.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to just point out that the downtown area on Main Street, like all the walkable area from Main Street is Zone C3. And that zone doesn't have a lot of form-based code, but it's integral to the identity of our community for ourselves and as a tourist community. And so without some kind of form-based code representing our historic Western Main Street, that could just be redeveloped into a Holiday Inn or whatever hotel of your choice.
Right, so that, I think that is kind of where you could do something is, like I said, when we, if you draw out all of the zones that you could have hotels in, it's pretty depressing. So, and technically, it could all develop that way. Well, it won't, but like, so you do have to look at that component, the redevelopment side of things and preventing, or making sure you're getting, if something does redevelop, you're getting what you want.
Yeah, or the egg yolk, like Emily was saying, be retail first floor. Overnight accommodations or a hotel on the second floor, just to kind of mix in development. It makes sense to have it downtown to me, so people can walk, but.
In any of the communities that you looked at, I understand what Becky's saying where we don't, the grandfathered thing, I mean, it's, it's likely the outcome. But if there was a way that you could essentially take all existing overnight accommodations and make them into an overnight accommodation zone, it would end up being a little patchy in some places, depending on where things are. But then you would have that actually be the zone, rather than it just being the use. And then you would have to monitor all of those individual ones, make sure the lapse period between property transfer wasn't X, Y, or Z. And you could say, I mean, God, you could even have like a time. It does seem like with the grandfathered uses, the idea being that if there were a sensible scaling back, if someone did not want to have an overnight rental anymore and wanted to turn it into a retail business or housing or something like that, that's where the grandfathered thing makes sense. Because you could always go backwards rather than forwards. And if you made it, you know, if you stayed that zone, whoever would buy the property next could put another, a new hotel. I'm just wondering the best way to do that, so we.
So you're saying?
Legally, it's tightest, but also it doesn't seem like we have like a million grandfathered uses all over the city. Or we have like our, say, H Hotel 1 or whatever, spot zoning everywhere.
Are you trying to freeze overnight accommodations like as they are now?
Well, just, I mean, accounting for existing uses and not changing existing uses because legally we can't, but also not having it be grandfathered everywhere, like Becky was saying. Like she, you expressed that people were kind of wary of that.
Yeah, I mean, the C2 zone's fairly small, when you look at it.
So can you give us an example?
There is that one area though. So if we look at like commercial nodes in residential areas, there's the area at Fourth North, the intersection of Fourth North and Fifth West. So Jimbo's or T and J's, H.
HMC's.
And, and so like there and along Fourth East is an area that could be like very similar to what we see like Daze Corner Market and Milt's and that, and the office buildings there. And that could even be replicated in, on Kane Creek, like we were talking about at our last meeting, that Kane Creek could also be sort of a neighborhood market area. Right now, that's C2 along Fifth West. And so it's, there are not overnight accommodations now. But if in this moratorium, we designated that area and said, you know, that, maybe not all of C2, but identifying areas where we want to see, it's kind of like the point positive. Like, all right, we know that overnight accommodations are our focus, but what are, what are we really trying to see instead? We want to see more offices, offices that have accessibility to an area because they're not competing with nightly rentals.
Yeah.
So, so there is that little piece of C2, there are little pieces of C3, pieces of C2 where if we were to kind of curb the enthusiasm of nightly rentals, we would see a growth in other business opportunities. And, and I think that's what we've all been talking about too, and I don't know how that is going to.
I mean, it would almost be making existing overnight rentals, the default in our new zoning would be C2. So like Williams Way could become C2 or wherever it is. It is, or other places where there's overnight rentals, or hotels or what have you. If things were, went from, like if that then became the sort of, and I think it would express the priority of the city where if this is no longer used as an overnight rental, if the grandfathered use lapses, this is what we would like to see it turn into.
But even aside from grandfathered uses, like where there isn't currently an overnight rental or a hotel on a parcel that's in C2 or in C3.
Yeah.
If we said, all right, no more in C2 or C3, then we, what we would see are things like, you know, milk and pillows and professionals.
You're thinking more of C5, it sounds like.
Be more like C4, C5. And then if we said, all right, well, we still have a lot of growth to do on the North End, and we're doing all that infrastructure with sewer, but don't just plop a hotel there. How about a restaurant and some retail up there as well? And so kind of.
Are you talking about the RC?
RC.
RC.
And C5, 4, 5, C, what's the C? C4.
On what street?
On 191, before you get to Resort Commercial, it's C4.
C4, C4 and then RC.
Well, let's just maybe take a step back. I, I know that these, the Euclidean zoning is what you're used to, and that will stay in place. But these overlay zones and the other tools that I talked about are what are really going to help you. It's going to, you're going to be pushing the focus less on like, relying less on the, those codes and zones and more on a review process and doing, doing the review part of it, the performance and the criteria to see if they meet your, your goals as a community. So, so that's really where it's kind of, it's going to shift more responsibility on you all, essentially.
Yeah, I think we're a little nervous about that, like, no, that's a nervous.
You might be going there, and it might have been in your timeline slide, but where and when is all that work supposed to happen? Between April 30th and the end of May?
No, like I've mentioned, the overlay zone, that's what will happen in that time period. These other finer details are what you'll work out after.
Yeah, but all that work in May, who's going to do it? Like, are we going to have much more frequent meetings as, as a group, or?
You all will propose the specific ordinance changes, right? And then council will just hold public hearings and then vote on.
Well, we, I believe we have, we'll be working with our advisory committee. We'll have another meeting. And that's where, I mean, we really are relying on that committee to, you know, it's, it's where it has county and city members, and then it has, you know, members of the community as well. And to be honest, I'm not exactly sure, like, I don't think any of us are exactly sure how, how many meetings it will take, or how, you know, what it will take to, to get it all fine tuned. But it's definitely something that we're not going to be working in a black box, like, or in a box by ourselves on.
With the overlay zone would come those small revisions of underlying code and underlying zones to reflect that, right? So you're not going to say, this is now the overlay zone. You will also have to say, and also overnight accommodations are no longer in C4 in our Section 17 of the code, right? I mean, that has to go hand-in-hand.
Overlay zone, I believe, takes care of that.
Okay.
So wherever that overlay zone.
It automet, it amends it out of, because we'd have, I mean, it's, it would just be striking, like listed permitted uses.
I don't believe you have to go back and do all that, but I'm not positive, but that's how I understand it.
I personally think this is a great discussion, Emily, I want to thank you and you guys as well. Because in my mind, the C2 thing has come up once before in a world of short-term rentals there, and people resistant, obviously, to losing a lucrative use. But if there's places in the C2 zone where. but if there's places in the C2 zone where, if they were disallowed, for example, but realistically, because of the way the buildings are built, or the way the neighborhood is structured, that they may have a point, they would be difficult to change their uses over to local offices, local businesses and so forth, maybe, because if that's the case, then I can see an overlay that would, in those zones, that would allow, uh, short-term rentals to continue, whereas other parts of C2, like along Williams Way, for example, I'm thinking, um, with better traffic access, would be candidates for disallowing short-term rentals with the goal of planting local businesses and offices there. So, I mean, this is one place where I can see the utility of an overlay zone in, in that particular area to judiciously choose which uses we want and which places, so.
Yeah, and let's not forget-
New, new uses.
And let's not forget, too, like-
It's a very important distinction.
Townhomes, warplexes, small apartment complexes, um, as what we also need to point positive for as well. And I know that the focus is so nightly rental, um, but, um, if, if we step back from just that, that sort of like negative target, and we think about what we're trying to develop in this future land use process, it's this space to grow what we need to be a functional community.
Yeah, yeah. Is it within your scope to add other types of commercial zones? Not just focus on where to restrict nightly rentals, maybe? Where can we add more commercial zones to take the pressure off, to add more office spaces and?
Yeah, that's definitely, um, part of it.
Cafes and commercials.
And I think we will also be taking a stab at that, we've heard, kind of through those focus groups, and then, I mean, today in our meeting, I feel like we kind of have a sense of, of where those might develop, and, and, um, we just need to kind of work that into, to those options. Um, it's more of, like, you just have to find a way to, like, it's, it's kind of like you're identifying those areas as where you want things to go, and then we have to somehow, you know, create an incentive.
Well, yeah, and is that gonna be part, or is that kind of our part, too, after the moratorium? Because I could see us saying like, alright, this, this intersection of Fourth East, Fifth, uh, Fourth North, Fifth West, being this like commercial node, um, like, uh, neighborhood, what did you call it, neighborhood, um-
Neighborhood commercial. RC5 is called neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial, yeah, where we can buy stuff, um, without having to go to, you know, downtown or whatever, or Grand Junction. And, um, and so, um, it's one thing to like, put it on a map or as part of an overlay, but then what we can do, um, at, to follow up are these incentives. Like, we could say in 2020, we're gonna hardcore incentivize, um, the identified commercial nodes, and say, if you develop in this year, um, we'll do X, um, but like, we've, we've, like, impact fees, or I don't know what incentives we can throw at it, maybe, David, you've got a better idea?
So our, I mean, our focus would be on doing the actual things we can with land use, and that would be like ways to make it harder to do the stuff that you don't want, ways to make it easier to do the stuff you want, but then you do have that other layer of financial things that are outside of. Yeah, and, like, we have the, you know, our economic consultants that have done this kind of work, and they, we can work with them on identifying those.
And that'll be part of it, so we get both like a, a zone area thing, and then like incentives, tools to incentivize the development of it.
Those are all things that you'll have to work on, yeah.
Yeah, just our future land use planning, it's the, you know, sitting down with the zoning map and saying, okay, what do we want to see in 15 years here as this shifts, or what have you.
But as part of this process, we'll kind of identify those community nodes, because that's very much what we heard, is that, like, it's not just like having too many hotels, it's like, there just aren't these like community places and spaces, that they're, I don't know if they weren't, haven't ever been here, or if they disappeared, or there just aren't enough of them, but that's kind of the sense that we're getting, is that those are, like, that, it, the purpose of this, um, I think is just as much as building your community as much as stopping certain incentives that have maybe gotten a little out of hand.
Man.
Yeah.
Probably worth remembering, for context, why, why we're here in the first place, at least initially, which was that, um, what was it now, almost two years ago, the city passed a update to the general plan, but what was not in that update was a future land use map, right? And so Landmark was brought on, in part, to do initially, a process to develop a future land use map that would be part of the general plan, right, in addition to the general plan. And so, the, uh, that process is gonna probably take a lot longer than any moratorium, addressing the moratorium, right?
Right.
And so, you know, we kind of, the moratorium, uh, we're triaging by dealing with the moratorium requirements, but the future land use map pieces you're talking about, I think particularly with where, um, the commercial zones will go, and maybe more dense neighborhoods, and that kind of thing is a, is a-
Ongoing.
Is an ongoing process that is, is there, for sure.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're heavily linked to your finding, your, your, the triage is making sure that the future land use map isn't obsolete by the time council, I mean, seriously, actually, if, it would be outside the realm of possibility if someone decided to put three more hotels in certain places, you wouldn't have community nodes anymore, so.
I think I've asked this before, but can we extend the moratorium, so that we do this? That's what I thought.
Hard stop.
I thought that I-
August.
Chris is over there, no.
Can I make a comment about the Spanish Valley thing? Because, um, I've been thinking about it a little bit. Right now, the proposed development on Setla, you know, the one thing nobody can control. It's, it's all vacant right now, and we know for sure that we've got needs right now in Moab for housing, and, and we've got an imbalance, because we have more hotels than we have workers to provide the services. And, and service workers are spread thin, and you're hearing that feedback from employers. And we don't have any option, I'm assuming that if Spanish Valley, San Juan County begins to develop, they're gonna be developing commercial and housing in tandem, is that correct? That's what I kind of heard from Jerry McNeely and heard from Bruce Adams.
My understanding is that you have to have rooftops before commercial comes, so typically, uh, residential comes first. People won't typically invest.
Except that there's the nightly rental market, which is rooftops, too, but a different kind of rooftop.
Right.
So, um, I'm just feeling like, um, we already have a situation in, within our boundary to, that we need to deal with, so I'm less like concerned about like what that growth is gonna, how that growth is gonna impact how we organize, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Well, it does, are you saying that you think that the housing market will first take over before the commercial does?
That's typically how it works.
But that's not how it's working in our county.
Yeah, that's not our reality.
And it's not gonna work in that county either, because it's the dollar that's gonna motivate.
Well, it's, I mean, I think it depends on how you define commercial. If you're defining commercial as like renting out your condo, as an overnight accommodation, then, then maybe not, but, um, I guess what I'm saying is, in the traditional commercial sense, like, you know, a grocery store, or a, you know, any of those kind of amenities, they justify locating themselves in places once they have enough people within a certain area. So those things don't, they typically follow the residential development. So in that plan, they have areas designated for commercial development, it's not tons, and, and they anticipate it coming after, um, people start living there, so.
I mean, I can see that's very applicable up north, being in a resort community, that is not, that is not a reality.
Well, we already, I mean, we have, we have the Grand County side of Spanish Valley that already has the rooftops, essentially, so if you wanted to put all the commercial on the San Juan County side, I think that is, is kind of what you're getting at, right?
If anything, development in Spanish Valley, San Juan County could exacerbate our housing need.
But at the same time, I mean, and this is all just sort of, but, I mean, San Juan County, you know, y'all, you're working with San Juan County, too, and they have, I know, you know, changes in their administration, and there's a lot of, it seems like there's more of a desire now to say, okay, here's what Grand County just did, like, let's try to, you know, when it makes sense, follow that, I don't think it's still gonna be, it's not like it's, within maybe a couple of years, gonna be us with these very nice future land use map and everything really tightly regulated, and then the Wild West across the border and Spanish Valley, like, it's, I don't think San Juan County's far behind, right?
They, there's definitely a change going on there, that I'm not sure anyone knows what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Based on the, but based on the map that you created with San Juan County, um, that Landmark created with San Juan County, it's kind of its own self-sustaining model, correct? Like, is there, um, thought that residents outside would, would travel to? Or that residents inside would travel out for work? Do you know?
You know, honestly, I think that the hope is that they could, but the numbers aren't there. Does that make sense? The economic consultant, um, just like, having like jobs, that's probably the hardest part of that plan, is to get actual job growth in that area.
I think they're depending on Moab for the jobs.
Right.
Yeah, and the jail, and the hospital, and the library, and the post office.
EMS.
So the conversation about housing needs to include the city, which has all of our resources.
Yeah, there's just, I mean, it's just-
Yeah, it's complicated, it's weird.
Yeah, unfortunately, um, a boundary on, on a map doesn't necessarily tell people where they go shopping, or things like that, people just do what they do. When, when we worked on that plan, that's what we heard, like, I heard things like, why do I need a grocery store next in my neighborhood, I can just drive to Moab. You know, that's kind of, kind of-
That's what we don't want.
I, I saw, I saw a picture of, of an Amazon drop center, and then also of a, of like a big box, like a Walmart. Is that, is that truly being proposed for San Juan County?
I don't think that, that might, there might have been some sample boards. I, I'll be honest, I wasn't involved in that later half of the project, um, just more in the upfront part, and so I don't, I don't know all the details. I do believe that they, I mean, against those kind of ideas of like, we can just drive to Moab, they did include little community nodes where commercial would happen, um, and, and, but I'm not, I'm not sure of all the details, so.
So Jenny, is there any affordable housing, part of their residential plans out there?
I know it's, I do know it's very much on their minds, they don't, it's not something that they're ignoring, but I don't, I, like I said, I wasn't involved in the later-
I mean, the reason I ask, I mean, it would, you know, that area could function as a satellite south Moab, if you will, suburb, that people, you know, we'd rather not have a lot of cars driving up and down the highway, but at least it's, it's homes that people can afford, if they do it that way.
Well, I'll be honest, in my preliminary, like-
Nightly rentals. Well, at the Planning Commission, Karen and I went to the Planning Commission meeting that was recent, um, where they discussed the Love's Truck Stop, and one of the comments that the Planning Commission, uh, made was that they really weren't thinking about doing like a restriction for overnight rentals in the residential zone, remember? And, and then residents were saying, hey, we kind of think we want those restrictions, because our road now, um, people are renting their homes out, um, because the restrictions aren't in place and the character of our community has changed.
I understand all of this is gonna affect us, but can we maybe focus back on Grand County and the city? Because, um, that's the area that a lot of us were elected, um, to oversee the future of, and I understand we need to stay in conversations with San Juan County with what's, what's happening, but we don't have control over that, and our obligation is to make sure we're planning for a good future for the people who live in our city and our county, so, um, can we just maybe pivot back?
Yeah, I think the point that we need to drive home is that we cannot bank on San Juan County to provide our affordable housing.
Thank you, yes.
So along with that, could you give us an idea of what you hope the Planning Commission's role will be in the next three or four months? I'd really like to have some direction.
The same with the City Council.
I don't know that I can answer that right now, but we could, I, I could promise that we'll get you an answer. And that's something that I just need, uh, to, um, we need to talk about together as a team, and figure out what the next, next steps. I almost think that we kind of need to see what happens at this public workshop, and then we can lay out the rest, the rest of the steps and figure out how we're gonna get it done.
And my, my next question is, how much of an input does City Council, because I don't think Planning Commission does, how much of decision-making do they have in one, two, three, or four? Or is it gonna come from the public, or is it gonna become some kind of mix? Or can council just say, yeah, let's go with four? What's, what, what is that process gonna look like?
That's where our advisory committee comes in, so after we have this public workshop, we'll meet with the advisory committee, which has representatives from all of those bodies to, to kind of just discuss, like, you know, what, I mean, lots of times we get kind of, uh, like a clear direction from those meetings, the public meetings, and then we'd get the input from the advisory committee, too, and if the two match, then it's kind of, you know, it's kind of a good sign that that's the direction you should go, who, I don't know what will happen. That's why I think it might be best to just, like, once we, once we hit May first, that we can kind of figure out what we've heard, and, and what the, what the next steps are.
Let me maybe address that a little bit, both of those questions, so, maybe it helps to start at the end. At the end, the City Council has full discretion to make a decision as to what happens or doesn't happen in the land use code, complete discretion, they can ignore, or, uh, everything that came before them, or they can take it all whole cloth, and, or some sort of place in the middle. And they'll have the chance, uh, through a couple of meetings at least, a couple workshops, and more if we need to, to really refine that. Now, before that happens, the Planning Commission sees it, as, through the standard land use process, you get to do the same, you know, you can hear from what, you can take the product that is delivered to you, um, from Landmark, that is the result of this community process, and you can say, well, that's all well and good, but, you know, from our position as planning commissioners, we have a particular expertise or perspective, and we think that despite what came out of that process, our, our best judgment is that, uh, that plus X is what belongs, uh, in the recommendation that goes to the council. So you have that discretion as well. Now, prior to that, what's been happening, what's happening is, um, the public process is going on, and part of that is the advisory group, which, um, there are members of the Planning Commission from the county, Planning Commission from the city, city council members, county council members, they're on that. So there is that level of at least awareness and a chance to provide input from some members of the elected bodies and from the Planning Commission. So that, I, I, that is also happening at the same time, as well as participation to the degree you want in the, those public meetings, and so, this is a much more, and deservedly so, a much more robust interfacing with the Planning Commissions and the councils than you ever would normally see in a land use code revision process.
Well, we, and we want it to succeed. Like, we, you know, those, those last two months of, you know, getting it adopted and, and things like that, like, we're gonna do everything we possibly can in the five weeks that we're, um, working on developing these to make sure that we have the buy-in, so that goes smoothly, so. We're definite, like I said, we're not gonna work in a box. We, we, we understand that process really well, and how important it is to, to, you know, that, that, we know that it's going to-
So I attended both of the, uh, town halls a week, a couple weeks ago, and I don't remember saying, too many of you guys there, did you want to attend, or were you invited, or would you like? I mean, there could be a disconnect, uh, between what Planning Commission might recommend and what we might react to, because we're reacting to our constituency out there, and they're pretty much uniformly saying, as Jenny pointed out, stop growth, okay? And you guys may have more sophisticated solutions in mind and so forth, and, uh, so your recommendations may come down to us, but they're, could well get filtered by our exposure to what our residents are telling us over and over again, so I would encourage you guys to come to those.
That's Landmark's job, too, is to articulate what the public consensus was to us in a manner that isn't us necessarily having to attend if we can't, because we have other things going on in our lives and jobs, and the timing is terrible, or someone's out of town, or something happened with their family, the whole- The whole idea is that it shouldn't all depend on one public hearing. Like, Landmark is articulating what the public consensus is and giving us those comments and we can always watch it too, there's recordings. So, I mean, it's not like, that's the only way to get public input is to actually physically attend necessarily. So I don't, I don't think that's a.
And for me, this is.
I'm not gonna mind you, alright? I'm just saying that if, if, if you'd like to broaden, if you can manage to make it and broaden our perspective and see what we're seeing, then might be just.
And I think that's one of the reasons that I think this process is a little bit circular is because when Landmark gives their opinions to us as a planning commission and we act upon that, I would really love to have the focus of the council when I start that planning commission process. Because if Landmark comes to us with status quo, I wanna go with number four and city council wants to go somewhere in between, I would kind of like to see what council wants before we start our process, so we don't give you guys something that you're like, where it's come from.
But at the same time, isn't it your, I mean, not to play devil's advocate a little bit, but it's, it's also your role to not predict what the council wants, but to do, just do it on your judgment, right?
But it would be nice if we had the same vision, I think, going into the process.
I think that's what the advisory committee, the whole idea is that you're not operating, no one, the idea being no one's gonna be surprised by what the final product is. But it is on all of us to remain cognizant of what is happening in the interim.
And it's a very, it's an iterative, I love saying this.
Yes, you do.
The council loves me saying this, it's an iterative process, you know? These things are very iterative and they, they will evolve over the time. I mean, we do have a short time and, you know, it's not gonna be a perfect process because, you know, what they say, it's like fast, fast, cheap or.
Good.
Or good, right? You get two out of three and we're probably gonna, you know, we're gonna.
We're getting fast and.
We're getting.
Are we, are we good or cheap?
We're getting two-thirds of all those. But, you know, it's never gonna be perfect because you're just not gonna have enough time, but we're gonna, I think, given what we've got process-wise, you know, we're, we're gonna, we have a good process in place considering.
And I think we'll learn from it too. I mean, like David said, this is, this is somewhat new to us to be this interactive through it and I really appreciate that and I think it'll be better than past processes and we'll learn and, and there'll be more work to do on community development at the end of the moratorium regardless.
So ideally, when it comes to Planning Commission, we're making wording changes rather than con, like, content changes, yeah.
Well, maybe your comment's just coming from two, knowing we're gonna review the pad tonight and that was a document you guys worked on, passed to us and that was months and months ago, so. I mean, I'm assuming that's where.
Beautiful example, and then we worked on the pad under the land use code that we have, sent it to you guys and.
You were surprised.
You were surprised. That's kind of how we felt. So I would not like, I would not like to send anything to you that you're gonna be surprised about.
Yeah.
So.
But I think David's right, that it's that advisory committee that really, that's where we rely on people to kind of come to an agreement on a direction, so I don't think there'll be any.
And that's why I'd like to be able to attend one of, one of those at some point.
So it's your intention, your desire for us to, all of us, to attend the public, open, public meeting? Is that correct?
If you, if you can, that's always great. You know, you know, we'll, we'll, like you said, we'll do our, we always document everything and write up our findings and you can get it that way if that's how you prefer. I, I personally think that it shows that your community, that you're a part of the community, but it's not required.
Are you guys planning on hanging on some, some maps on the wall? You know, the north, south corridors, C2 areas and so on? So that people can come in and say, oh, this would be a great place to keep short-term rentals or not, you know?
So for the four options, we'll have a map for each that, that shows like what we're proposing, that graphically shows it, so.
That's what I suspect, people, people are gonna sit in front of those maps and go, this is exactly what happened when you guys did this little north area plan over there. Everybody swarmed around those maps.
Yeah.
And marked it all up and says, why can't we do this? I mean, you know, what are you gonna do with that if you disallow that kind of thing? I mean, and that's why we really collect a lot of.
Yeah, we like to have a dialogue going. One of, one of the, so we'll, we'll have the options, the pros and cons, four maps, one for each option. We'll also have some information on the different things that we reviewed and then like the, the stuff I passed out today. And then, well, also what I, I'm trying to do is take all of that information that we heard from the scoping meetings, those initial meetings, and turn them into positive statements for your communities, community, which we call guiding principles. And we're toying with the idea of maybe having the people in attendance kind of rank those options and how they match those guiding principles and, and come up with their own conclusions, you know? So, but I think that will be valuable. We're turning those, all that negative stuff that griping into these positive statements and basically getting verification that, you know, is this really what you want as a community? So that alone could help.
I like the idea of guiding principles. I think there's a lot to be said for that, because if you, you know, you have rules that come out of that, but if you know what the underlying reason is or the underlying principle, it's a lot easier to articulate that in the future and know when you can change a rule and why you're doing it and, yeah, like that.
That should all come from our general plan as well.
So everybody, it's 6:43. This council kind of has a marathon meeting ahead of us that starts at seven. So I didn't, I just wanna say like, maybe we can wrap up, get the last two minutes of just like any burning.
I have a, I have a burning question, just because I know I'm gonna get it from the public. So when I look at the four options here, I know that a lot of people I talk to, I mean, kind of had that question of, you know, I personally feel, they would say to me, that we're at a point where it's enough. And so, but there is no option here that says, you know, what we have as existing is where we stop until we revisit whatever, any year or two and see where we're at. And so I'm just curious, did the, did the input that you guys get not include that sort of input?
No, we, we talked about that, but felt like it would open up a whole bunch of lawsuits, so.
I mean, I do understand under Utah property rights law, that would be possible. That's why I ask.
You think it is possible, is what you're saying?
It's unprecedented. We asked if they had done it before and they had not. Nobody in Utah has done that.
Yeah, so that, that, we probably started there and then brought four back a little bit as we discussed with the project team, that, that we would, we would restrict it in other ways and that's through this, you know, just physically like a small area that it goes to and, and then these other deterrents. So then you kind of at least have yourselves covered, in, in a sense of that you're like offering a place for that to happen and then, does that make sense? That's kind of, that's.
Yes and no, I just don't know that it encompasses the bold perspective of, of everywhere our community was at mentally, so.
So are you saying that you wanna see an absolutely no additional overnight accommodations anywhere in the city option?
Well, I thought, I thought that's what the, the, the range was gonna include.
Four is pretty close. And, and I think, like, we just talked as a, as a, you know, project team with Zachary and David and Mark and I and, and Joel, right? And, and that it, it would be a real challenge to like just completely cut off everything and, and that it's maybe like, like the sexual oriented businesses where you at least have to provide a place for them somewhere in your community, but you can restrict it through other ways by just like if it's, you know, other, other ways and that's that approach that we decided to take.
Would presenting that, even if it's something that you realize council isn't going to do, I mean, I think it strengthens your negotiating position to have that option even on the table and presented to the public?
It definitely does.
Yeah. And that, that would be my like, likely, it doesn't seem like that's gonna happen, but having it on there, you, you have our, whatever we else decided to name it, four is a scaling back from something rather than four being the extreme.
Five, shut it down.
Yeah.
That's like.
That's fine.
That's what it says, that's all it says.
That would be the extreme.
I was gonna say, maybe you should leave the heading the same.
Yeah, that could be, yeah, I'd be fine with that heading in that situation.
Tell your right option.
So those are good suggestions and hopefully you can move forward with those. It's 6:46, so unless anybody is just dying and can't email you and just has to speak out in front of this whole group, I say we, we adjourn for a 15-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, Jenny.
Thanks, David.